Good afternoon and welcome to the April 16 meeting of the Murfreesboro Historic Zone Commission. I believe we have a quorum present so we can call the meeting to order. And the first item is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March 19. Are there any corrections or additions? Or a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. Robert, could you give us the applicant's request today, please?
Our new business today is 418 East College Street. The applicants are Scott and Nancy Rourke. They're requesting approval for replacement of windows that they've installed at their house, installation of gutters and shutters. They would like to replace fascia and soffit and repair secondary entrances into the apartment house. The house, this house is located on the south side of East College Street, about midway between Manny Avenue and Highland Avenue. The house was originally constructed in 1900 in the colonial revival style of architecture with cross gables, dormers, heavy frieze, and cornice. The house is a two-story frame house. Originally it was asbestos siding. It is a contributing structure in the North Manny Avenue Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. The applicants purchased the house, took possession of it in January of this year. And the purpose of this, well, their reasoning was for, to use it as income-producing property. And they're planning renovations to the house. I talked to Mr. Rourke over the phone and he said during the purchase of the house, he was unaware that the property was located in Historic District. And he also said he probably wouldn't have purchased it had he known that. Not knowing the fact that he and his wife had purchased the house in the Historic District, they began plans to repair the house which had fallen to a state of disrepair. And their exterior changes to the house include, like I mentioned before, replacement of the windows, gutters, soffit, and fascia. And they also want to install the new shutters once the windows are installed. They've already repaired and replaced some entryways into the apartment house that's on the side of, of the house, on the west side of the house. And if we could see some of these pictures, I'd like to scroll down and show you. This is the front entrance to the house. And you can see that this picture here I took on College Street. And you can see the side entrance into the house where there's a little railing in the backside of it. This is the east view of the house. This is a close-up of the, of the side entry into the house. I've talked with the building and codes department about these stairways into the house and they don't exactly meet codes and they're going to make some changes to that. They're going to have to make changes in order to meet codes. And they've talked to the codes department. They're aware of the changes that need to be made, so they'll, they'll be able to do Again, this is a front entry to the house. The, the front porch is also going to be in need of repair. It's actually, the front part is sagging a little bit due to the, the box gutters that are up there. And they're, they're going to have to do some repair to, to make that up to codes. This is a picture of the, some of the windows that they have installed already. This is on the west side of the porch at the front of the house. And these windows, they're existing windows. They haven't replaced those yet. You can see that the style is similar. And I apologize for the sideways view of this, of this photograph. But this is the overhang of the house. It's, it's a box type gutter system. And over the years, it hasn't been maintained. And that's one of the reasons that they want to replace the, the box type gutters with, with a typical type gutter. And this is a picture of the dormer above on the second floor. And you can see the deterioration of the, of the box type gutter in front of the dormer. The applicants, they would like to replace the windows throughout the house. And they've already done so. And they've replaced some windows on the backside, on the side of the house, and one set of windows in the front already with the Anderson type windows, called a 1200 series TVA Green Energy Program approval low E argon windows. And I have a brochure that I want to pass out. I think Mr. Rourke also has a brochure of the, of the windows. And you want to pass those around? You can pass those to the other side also.
Okay. Are there any questions, Mr. Lewis, about your applications divided? Mr. Rourke or your representative, would you like to fill in the gaps or add to the comments that Mr. Lewis has made?
We purchased the house for, it's a triplex, actually. It's already divided up, has three meters and has been in that existence for quite a while, from my understanding, for many years. We purchased the house at, on College to hopefully improve that value of that house by making these improvements. The house does have significant disrepair to it, which makes it kind of stuck in the income-producing property type home, meaning that the way we assessed it and these proposed improvements that we were going to make were to try to maximize the value of the home. It's in a state of repair on the inside that is not conducive to rehabilitate it back to any historical significance, which is, you know, a sad case for that house and many other homes there. I don't, we didn't have pictures of my exact neighbors, but they're triplexes on either side of me or in the same condition. The one to the right has got a broken window and it's just covered with plastic. The one to the left has got, you know, traditional new vinyl siding type material on it. And it's got yellow up to about my eye level and then it's brown on one side. So it's, it's all kind of mixed and, and not very attractive properties. What we intended to do with the property was try to improve the, the exterior and its aesthetic view with new paint and covering up the existing material that's so bad. The soffit boards that, they were original type plank boards, had been probably 80% repaired with individual pieces of plywood over the years. Our intention was to cover that material so that you didn't have to see that shoddy workmanship as economically as, as possible and make the house as attractive as possible. The windows are, some of those are functional, some of them are not functional. The ropes are gone, the weights have fallen inside the windows, so they, they would have to be propped if they were opened. Those that will open, they're single pane and have cracks and a lot of air draft in them. So we intended to try to make the house a little bit more green by purchasing the Anderson window that's the Energy Star. We even went and had an inspection made, TVA inspection, to get a credit back for making those improvements to that home. Of course, we, our oversight and our fault for not realizing we bought a home in Historic District, we should have known that, but we did not, and would not have proceeded. And as soon as we were made aware by one of our neighbors there, we stopped. That's why there's only two windows on the front and the one on the side. They were making their way around to do the installation all at one time. And of course, we stopped immediately when we realized we were a foul of regulation there. So Mr. Keenan is representative from the contractor who handed out the brochures. They're a local contractor that we contracted to do that work. And he can kind of describe to you as well better the product that we're going to put on that home.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Board. Just a brief rundown of what we've got. This particular window is considered to be the green window by TVA. TVA has a Energy Star program that they put together where they actually give a cash incentive back to homeowners that will go in and put this window. And in the classes that our company has taken to go through this certification process with TVA to be able to get this done, very briefly, when the instructor was going through kind of some of the Q and A at the end, I raised my hand and I said, okay, I'm not a rocket scientist, but giving cash back incentive, I'm, I'm not following here why the benefit to TVA, you know, why would they do that? Because they're doing thousands of these across the state. And they said, well, simply because it costs billions of dollars to go in and build a new energy plant. And right now, all of our plants that we have that service this area are about 80% capacity. And he said if, as energies continue to be consumed, those capacities come higher and higher, at which point we're going to have to look at building a new plant. And for us, it's cheaper to give a cash incentive back for people to use energy rated windows that help lessen that electric bill and lessen the amount of use that they use. So I said, okay, well, at that point, no pun intended. The light bulb went off and I said, I get it now. I get it. In this particular application, what we are working with Mr. Rourke on was putting these windows in. On some of the locations on this home, it already had some of the vinyl windows installed. Of course, obviously, you've got some issues with the gutters and those types of things, which if you've got some of those pictures that, that you've already seen where you've scrolled through that show some of the rotten wood and just some of the issues that it just happens over years of neglect and, and just not having a history of upkeep. So at this point, you know, it, it's really up to, to you guys as to how it's best for us to proceed. But as far as we're concerned, our company is willing to stand behind your decision and his. For those of you that may or may not be familiar with our company, Advantage Home Improvement, we're the one that was selected by the city to go in and do a lot of the roof and window work for the Kennansburg down the street here. So that if you've seen our logo, that's probably where is, is from that work that we've done with them. And folks that work with that project would give us glowing reviews. So our intent is, as he said, is to go in and maximize the value of the home. But obviously, we need some direction from you guys at this point because we would not want to proceed any further without that direction.
And what was the name of your company again, please?
Advantage Home Improvement.
Okay. And your first name?
Robert Perry Keenan.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
For the record. Are there any questions of the applicant or applicants represented?
Advantage, is that on Burton Street there?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, on Burton Street. Yes, been in business here in Murfreesboro since 1957. One of the few companies in Middle Tennessee as a contractor that not only has the rating that we have with the Better Business Bureau, but it's also won the Torch Award of Ethics. And that's not something that they hand out lightly. For those of you that are familiar with the Better Business Bureau and that award, it's pretty prestigious. Just about anybody can go in and, and get accreditation from the Better Business Bureau by signing up or having a couple of years of good track record. You don't go through 57, or since 1957 and have that kind of reputation without, without them feeling like you're deserving of it.
So the improvements that are for us today, could you itemize those or replace them? Windows, you're covering up fascia, correct?
Yes, we-
Could you just kind of, just give a brief itemization?
Sure, absolutely. And if I leave something off, please. We're looking at the windows that are, again, that Energy Star window, the TVA number one rated window that they have for that program. The trim that we had looked at for around the fascia, it's called a white PVC, but that's the style. It doesn't mean that it's plastic. It's the material, it's got a wood grain finish to it. So it, again, kind of keeps in, in that look of the home. The home has got part asbestos shingle on siding and the other part, the overwhelming majority of it, is actually the hardy board, which is kind of a cement base. I'm sure you guys are very familiar with that. The grain that's on that, in this PVC trim that we would do over the soffits areas and the fascias, it's, it matches that same trim so that it all looks uniform.
Okay.
And then, of course, the gutter system.
And can you, is it a five-inch gutter, six-inch gutter? Is it aluminum, I guess?
Fives and sixes are pretty well standard as far as the industry is concerned. As you drive through that area, you'll see homes that have both. The cost difference for us as the contractor, and I'll go on record as, as saying this, the cost difference for us is negligible. The major expense in the gutters is the labor. So you're looking at an extra inch worth of material. So for us, if this board soffit to say, we want six inch because it kind of goes back to that time period and that we like the look of that, then that's fine. I can do that at no additional cost for our homeowner here.
Is there any work being done to the, the roof of the front porch, other than the gutters and the fascia?
Well-
Anything else that you're doing that is exterior that we need to know about?
Go ahead.
The, the front porch has, it looks like the front fascia board on there is, is what is giving the appearance that it's got a droop to it. Apparently, previously, there's been a lot of leak through that gutter system that is flat. I've had another general contractor that was doing some work for me over there, up on top, and he's a bigger man, over 200 pound. And he's patched that leak and fixed that gutter system where it was leaking through that porch. And has walked all over and all around the top of that. He says it's, that it's sturdy. The, the fascia board that I'm talking about is, it's like a one by 12 maybe. And it doesn't span, it's been replaced, or a part of it's been replaced. So it, it gives the appearance of a gap for the install. I think an easy fix that would make it symmetrical is to pull that board off, replace it with the same material there, another, that would span the whole front piece and then it would look level. But structurally, it's still in really good shape.
Okay.
So in good shape there.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant?
I was curious as to where the shutters were going to go and what type of shutters there would be.
Sure. If you've got a picture you can pull back up for us of the front, do you mind? Thank you so much.
We can see that picture.
Do you have pictures that I sent with the application? Do they happen to be?
They're passing, they're passing them around.
Oh, okay. Okay. We're real open. We haven't made any of those purchases. The windows are the only thing that we've made any purchase on and are open to suggestion. I don't know the name of the style that's on the picture that I sent.
Okay. It's a louvered shutter.
Louvered shutter, just a louvered shutter. And like I said, be very open to any suggestion on that.
Well, I think because we have several topics here today, we probably ought to focus on one, each one individually to make sure we address it completely.
That would be helpful, thank you.
It'd be helpful for all of us. And I have to say, I regret that we're all here today for this particular issue, for you all as well as for ourselves, because we're put into a difficult situation to have to respond to something that was well-intentioned on your part, but now we're into a situation which, which makes it difficult for us. I'd like to maybe, being the person I am, I guess I'd like to start with the easy parts first. The shutters were probably never on there. Are there any indications of any hinges on those window frames?
Not on the frames, no. And the material, there's like cement tiles, what type, masonry type tile?
Yes, yeah.
It's not the original either that's covering the front and sides. Originally, it was a wood board exterior. That's just covered. So those boards have been covered up and if there was any evidence, they're covered up now.
So you're describing that there's a new casing trim on top of the old casing trim of the windows?
Oh, no, no, sir, not on the window, but the exterior material on the walls on the side. I thought maybe they've been affixed to the wall. But no, there's no evidence of any chutes.
For the record, I, I am, I'm pretty positive that the casing that's around the windows is not the original casing either. And the only reason why I say that is because there are some windows that have what I would call just generally rot, more so than the others, substantially more, to the point to where you could tell that there is more than likely a significant age difference in the wood.
Are the shutters you're intending to provide, are they vinyl or wood?
Vinyl was, was the original intention. Of course, originally, we weren't looking at the house through historical eyes and if, personally, I don't, putting shutters on the home is not very important to me at all at this point. Not putting shutters on there is right. We were just looking, when we looked at the home before making purchase, we had, my wife had looked at pictures on the internet of similar style homes, maybe not historically correct, and had some color schemes in mind and was wanting to put the shutters to bring out some color pop on the house itself, so it was-
I understand. As, as far as the architectural style, it's a fairly simple-looking structure. And with the asbestos siding on there, it even simplifies it more. If it had clavish siding beneath it, it would have had a much more vibrant aesthetic to it, I think. But to put shutters on it, I would, I would say it looks a lot like the documents you gave us for the windows. Is this the kind of shutter then? Although this is a panel shutter, this would be a louvered shutter in its place. And so it's going to look somewhat like this. And so if you were to, in your mind, close the shutters, these two shutters, for instance, they would never meet.
Correct.
And so that's one of the, A, for me, the fact that there were probably never shutters on here from its architectural style and period, to put shutters on it that are one panel wide, now I've seen actually bifold shutters, they actually did that historically. It's very rare to find. The library at Rugby, for instance, has them. But to have shutters that never meet is, to me aesthetically, just a huge mistake architecturally. So I would not recommend those. And so for me, as far as shutters, I would make a motion that we not install shutters on this particular house.
Well, I would support that certainly.
Here's a motion by Mr. Thompson. Second?
Second.
Second by Deborah. Any comments regarding the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed likewise? Motion passes. Next item?
I would probably address then, we'll come back to the windows last. I think it's going to take longer discussion on that. With the fascia and soffit repair, so you have, as I understand it, there was individual wood planks up there, perhaps tongue and groove, that were at some point replaced with stripped plywood as they rotted. And now you're wanting to cover this up with a solid material that then will not show the grooves or anything like that. So it'd be a solid-looking surface standing from below.
Yes, well, but I don't remember there being tongue and groove up there.
Well, you wouldn't see the tongue and groove, but you would see the planks.
If I remember correctly, I believe it's, it's just your standard pine, one by 10 or one by 12 on the overwhelming majority of the home, if I remember correctly. Now, I could be mistaken on that, but I'm thinking it was just one by 10 or one by 12.
But that was the intent, was to cover the different materials up there with one-
Uniform.
Uniform type of material. And of course, that was, you know, prior to looking at it through historical eyes and looking for some symmetry. And then as an afterthought, looking at it through historical eyes, I, my intent to, if I were to go forward with that, would be to just cover what's there and preserve it to where it is. And then in the future, if that home were ever to be restored back, you would have at least that base to start with because you could peel the other material off that would just cover it.
I understand that approach from a maintenance standpoint, but I think it sets in motion a dangerous precedent that we have allowed before on the house on East Main, on the corner where the car hit the side porch. And we did, they did some improvements there that they ripped off some gutters and stuff like this and put back vinyl or metal siding. But it was already existing on the house and so they had a long-range goal to restore the project, the house. But my concern is always when you cover material like that with something that is not meant to breathe in particular, it's going to trap moisture in the house and it's going to cause further deterioration. And it will also create just an aesthetic that I think will be visible for anybody in the right of way seeing that, that they will actually notice it. And for me, I think it's a good idea to replace in kind what's there that's deteriorated instead of putting something back that appears to be low maintenance. It's just going to really hide the maintenance issues. I think your problem is getting water in the house through your built-in gutters. And that's what's causing a lot of your rot into your soffits. And if you get the water problem taken care of and then you can repair the soffits, you shouldn't have to come back to fix those anytime soon. So for me, I would rather see you repair in kind what's there than putting something to what I would consider shrink rabbit.
Sure.
Probably, probably 80%, I'm sorry, of the soffit board has, has been replaced with plywood, pieces of plywood. So it's kind of jagged-looking. Out of, out of the 100% of the soffits, what percent would you say is deteriorated now that you're wanting to cover for that reason?
Well, none of it for the reason that it's rotted, it's just the different-looking materials. It just kind of looks bad. Aesthetically to me, to have the different materials up under there, that's why I would want to cover it was to-
Is to clean up the look of the existing materials.
So in following your train of thought then, what would, if we've got different materials, like for example, if we've got the plywood there and it's jagged or it's just not uniform, so it would be okay then? Or you would prefer to go in and see that plywood replaced with plywood so that it is uniform and at least matching in the, in the flow of the lines? Or what, what's your preference?
Well, I'm only, I'm only one person who speaks here or raises questions or has an opinion. So I, mine would be to still replace in kind with plywood and whether it has jagged edges or that kind of thing, that you clean it up and make it look as finished as possible. But I think to add another material that was not on the house would be not a good approach for preservation. And so I'd like to see you replace in kind and clean it up.
So were you going to just place the new material? How were you going to treat the deteriorated wood behind there? Were you just going to mask it? I mean, were you going to pull it off or?
The gutter system has been roofed over, so now the rain flow is just coming off the house. And you can see a trail around the house of where it's hitting. It doesn't appear, with exception to the porch, it doesn't appear that there, from being underneath, that there's any water issues with the foundation. Of course, the house is metal pin around, kind of like a mobile home is, around certain block columns. So it doesn't appear that that runoff is actually causing any issue with the property as it stands now. So I think probably for a good number of years, that roof has been on there, whoever put it on. It appears it's been on there 10-plus years, has covered those up and-
Okay, so you were planning to-
So I don't, I'm sorry, I don't think that there's the same problem that caused the issues with those wood. I don't think it's continuing with the moisture issue there.
Because you said that they, I misunderstood too, the built-in gutters are now covered over with the roof that's on there now.
That's my understanding. I haven't been on top of it myself. I haven't been on top of it myself, because I'm afraid of ladders at my age anymore, but I've had the other gentleman that repaired the leak in the porch.
Well, maybe we should look at these two features, the built-in gutters and the fascia holistically, because they're all sort of related. Can we pull back to the picture of the west elevation? Is that possible? Or any of the elevations on the side? So we see, for instance, that trim. If we could keep going back a few more. You see how the gabled roof there has those funny little filled-in pieces? I think that's where, A, it's either to keep birds from roosting up there, or that pitch seems odd to me for built-in gutters, so it looks like to me they did extend the roof at a different pitch, the lower two feet, to cover your built-in gutters, and that's why there's a funny little angle going on there. Without seeing it in detail and being up in a bucket truck myself, I really couldn't tell you. But I suspect, hearing that, if the roof is overhung, the built-in gutters, you don't have problems with your gutters anymore, because you're saying there aren't anymore, it's just overflowing the edge of the lowest shingle and rolling back onto the wood trim. So there are no gutters on the house now?
That's my understanding of the function of the house.
And so really, all we'd be doing is taking off that one little piece of decorative trim that we saw in one of the pictures. You have a close-up of the, this, this one with the dormer. You can see there's just this little piece of trim, then you're going to take this piece of trim off the fascia and put on a built-in, a prefinished aluminum, I'm guessing, gutter? Is that what you're putting in? I don't have a problem myself with taking that piece of wood trim in, so, because if they keep putting the wood back, it's going to continue to rot, no matter what. We could do outriggers and/or metal brackets to hold a half-round gutter out and catch it, but at this period, half-round gutters would be appropriate, but we see the OG-type or prefinished gutter today everywhere in all houses, and so I think it's a committee decision whether it's round, half-round, or it's an OG shape, but what I'm hearing, and I'm just trying to help interpret for you all as well, is that we would be removing that piece, it almost looks like a piece of crown mold at the top of the fascia underneath the shingles. So if we took that off and put a built, a OG traditional gutter there, you're talking about a square or rectangular downsvat from that, that is your intent.
And are you, I'm sorry, and I was going to ask, are you, do you have a preference, fives or sixes, or does it matter, or?
No.
Well, just from being a homeowner, you're going to be happier with the sixes, because it carries the water off much better.
Absolutely. But again, we want to make sure that we're following your direction.
We can go either way.
Okay. Well, it's basically the way to you, so, will the sixes, if that's what you want?
I think six would look better.
Yeah. So you're just going to attach the gutter to remove that one little piece of, like you said, the crown mold, it's like a quarter round or something, and just go right there, and just repair that little damaged piece as you go along?
Correct.
And so the gutter's going to be covering whatever you repair that with.
That is correct, because if you don't, then it's going to cause the gutter to kick out a little bit, which in a blowing rain would, as you were saying earlier, would trap the moisture behind that, which is what we're trying to prevent.
Okay. So, looking at this holistically, are there any more questions about the gutter and the soffit and the fascia, and what the intentions are?
What about the soffit bottom?
I wanted to clarify, so we understand the gutter, we're doing this incrementally so we all understand.
Yes.
So we, I understand at least the gutter, and I think you all do as well, and we see that there was a rectangular downsvat on the front porch, the lower front porch, so that matches what's there. So help with this photograph here, explain to us, where is the wrap of, is it just the vertical part, the fascia, or is it the underside of the soffit too? What is the intent?
That is correct. It is just the vertical part, that is correct, which by definition would just be the fascia, the soffit part at that point would be the part that's up and underneath, and unless it's something that you guys felt like it needed, I, the little bit I know about historic homes, they typically do not have a soffit material, they are typically the exposed rafter tails, like what you see already here. With the exception of underneath this first level here, where you do have the plywood.
Yeah, but you see the exposed rafter tails there, and the high cornice of the main house has the enclosed cornice there, the overhang, but, so we're talking about a prefinished metal gutter, and then the remaining five to six inches is going to be a prefinished material on the vertical surface only.
Or we could leave it to plywood, either, again, at your preference.
I think that's where we, I'd love to hear more from the rest of the committee on that.
Well, it looks to me on that picture that the plywood is on the, underneath of the soffit itself, that that's plywood.
It is, in that particular location, yes, and so on that.
And you're just wanting to repair that and repaint?
As needed.
I don't have a problem with that, and then the front soffit, and it seems to me at this particular point, it looks like a fair bit of it is in pretty decent shape, and you have some areas that are not. I think it might be less expensive just to repair and paint.
Ms. Belcher, you had a comment?
That was exactly what I was going to say, repair and paint, and you said it first. The vinyl is not going to let it breathe, that's a big mistake.
Absolutely.
On your interior, then you get all that moisture buildup, and it's not a way to go.
Absolutely.
Is there a material that would allow that function? I know I've seen some.
There's perforated soffit material, whether it's vinyl or metal, that you can put up there, but again, it's, you know, we're in the business of adhering to preservation guidelines and stuff that the National Park Service has put out, because we're in a historic district, and you just don't put back materials that were not there. And so we are charged with trying to implement the Secretary of Interior standards, and we would not recommend it. So, I mean, for me, and speaking strictly for me as one voting member, I think the idea of, as proposed by David and Deborah, is that we repair and paint what's on the cornice, the overhang, and then put, take the wood trim off, it's immediately at the top of the fascia, put in a prefinished metal gutter, six inches fine, rectangular gutter's fine, I think even the OG shape, I don't know, Paul, how you feel about that? Go that approach, and that would take care of all that.
And I think that in the, obviously in the future, if it, we go in and we replace some of those sections that need to be replaced, and it looks like there is a continuation of the issue, then we can come back to you guys and get some further direction.
If it's more of the same issue, more just linear feet of the same overhang issue that we're responding with an answer to today, I don't have a problem with you doing more of the same.
Okay.
Just if you come to another type of item.
Sure. Easy enough, thank you.
Okay. Are there any more discussion?
I've got just a general question or two. I haven't heard anything about what you plan to do with the roof or the siding. Are you just not to a point where you feel that anything needs to be done on that?
I feel like the roof is probably halfway through its life, so I would, at the time that it was closer to the end, I presume I would want to go back with just the same material that's there.
And how is the area where the dormers die into the roof, at the line of the roof? I can't see that from, really, I can't tell anything about it, is it?
I don't have any leaks in the home, so I'm presuming they're okay, but I haven't been up there personally. Mr. Cross, were you asking if there's like a metal valley there, or that it's shingled?
I tell you where I'm going with it, is that a lot of times when projects, when you come in and you just attack the obvious stuff, and you don't deal with the whole building envelope, you wind up coming back in a very short period of time, because the old work is breaking down and the new work is being affected by that, and then it gets to be more expensive. That's, that's just a general concern that I have, not so much for the house, but for you as the investor. I've been through this time and time again, all across the state, and I try to assess the whole project and be very thoughtful about how I spend my money, just so I don't wind up, having made that mistake, I try not to make it again. So that's why I was asking, if you get into something in that roof area where the pitch has been altered, it could run into some problems, but that's, as I said, that's just a general, a general question.
On the, on the surface, it would appear, on the surface anyway, that the issue that we're having with some of those areas that have rotted is because of a rollback, and not because of, let's say, like a flashing issue, or where something is not overlapping correctly, in my professional opinion anyway, for what that's worth today.
Before we move to? Question about the soffits, did y'all agree to do something with the soffits, or what exactly?
We're going to bring that up for a motion.
Okay.
Before we move to windows, which is other improvement, we were, was there a motion regarding the gutters and the soffit and the fascia?
I have to remember. For the gutter and the soffit and the fascia, we recommend, I make a motion that we recommend to replace and repair existing material and clean up as best you can, and then with the gutter, a six-inch OG front.
Is that a clear enough motion? Is there a second to Ms. Belcher's motion?
What was the gutter?
Six-inch OG. And remove the trim so that you can put the OG back, so it'll look very much the way it is right now.
Absolutely.
Second?
There's a second? Is there further discussion on the motion?
Just to be clear, that means that there would be no vinyl added, nor hardy plank?
That is correct.
And just to note, I would suggest on the wood replacement that you prime and back prime it.
Absolutely.
Not everybody does that anymore.
Absolutely.
And I would even further say all six sides, not just all four sides, so the cuts also prime. Anything painted, you ought to do all six sides.
Absolutely.
Anything else on this motion? And all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise, and the motion passes.
As somebody that serves on two planning commissions currently, I'd thank you for your thoroughness on that. It's nice to see, thank you.
I think the third item, it was improvements that you are requesting today, are the exchange of the windows.
Before we go, perhaps, Mr. Chairman, to the windows, there's some entries that have been changed. Were those, Robert, replacing in kind? We know about the steps being modified to meet codes, so that's the non-issue, and it's probably the landing issue at the top of the stairs. Were the doors, so the doors were replaced, is that what happened? They were not replaced?
The only, there's two set of stairs there in the back corner. One set had a landing and stairs that were in bad repair, and the railing was in bad repair, so we made repairs to that one. That's the most forward one with the white paint. The stairway going directly up to the door, there is a concrete step there, and the last rise going into the door was about two or three inches higher than the rest of the rise on the other treads. So we put that and added that rail over it, built it right on top of those concrete steps that are still there. So that's, that's the only repairs that they made back there.
So there really does not appear to be an issue for the commission to talk about the entries, is that correct?
Actually, when I took pictures from the street, you could see, the only thing you could see from the street was the railing on this, on the other one, not even that one, it was the one that's closest to you.
However, we see in the picture here that part of it's painted, are you going to go ahead and finish painting the rail down the stairs?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
That's fine. Now, next item, if you're all ready, is the request for the window treatment, or the window replacement. Any questions, discussions?
Could you summarize for us two things, three things? What type of window is this? Is this a vinyl window?
It is a, it is a quote-unquote vinyl window by TVA regulations, yes.
It's a fully vinyl window, it's not a vinyl-covered wood window?
It is not a wood-clad window that has vinyl cladding over the top of it, no. Obviously, the framing and everything around it is wood, but.
And have you all installed windows of this size, vinyl windows, to make sure they won't sag, because vinyl windows by themselves, their nature, they tend to sag over time?
They have, we have, and actually, in answer to your question, and also kind of bragging on our company, we do a lifetime guarantee on our installation, so we make sure that we get it right the first time. That being said, on the rear of the home, just because of some sag in some of the elevations, we actually went through extraordinary measures to make sure that the windows not only would not sag, but were leveled out, as well as fully operational. Somebody that doesn't know a lot of the ins and outs of those kinds of windows, if you don't do it right the first time, then as you're talking about, you can get sag, and then eventually you go to lift the window up one day, and it won't, because it's twisted a little bit. And so, yes, absolutely, we went through some pretty painstaking measures to make sure that would not happen on this home.
The second item, unfortunately, that was just the first one, the second one, you, someone described that there were vinyl windows already on the home at the time you purchased it. Can you, it appears the house is three bays wide, it's got a pair of windows on either side of the front porch and a center one, so we call that three bays wide, it's got a gable roof, then it appears to have on the east side, or the left of the house, a two-story, one-room-deep wing to it, and then it appears to drop down to a one-story room beyond that. On the west, the east side, it's all covered with asbestos siding, the front's asbestos siding, and as you turn the west side there, the front is asbestos siding, but when you get to the back where those steps are, you've got a clavard, the hardy plank there. So knowing this building is sort of L-shaped, if you will, describe to us, where were the existing vinyl windows when you purchased the house?
On some of the, what I would call, if you're talking about the L shape, on the rear dogleg of that, there were a couple of windows that are still in place that were vinyl windows, one of which, one of which was even installed sideways, so, yeah.
There's two there, and they do have the, like, little drain things on the, discovered at the bottom, so they're.
They're sliders?
Yes.
Then there's a third window on that same face, and then there's one on the very back of the single, where it comes down to the single.
And on the rear elevation that we're seeing there, with the door that's facing, part of that is hardy plank, and part of that is some of the older traditional one-bay, but on the rear elevation, that's the only areas that have some of the, the original, what I would call the traditional one-bays. If you were taking the home as an overall percentage, I would say it's less than fifteen percent of the home has the original one-bay on it. And I'm relatively certain that the front of the home that looks like it's the old asbestos-style shingles, it's actually the knockoff hardy look to that, that hardy makes, that it's cement, because I thought the first, I thought that also, and then when we were walking around the house the second time, I got to looking at it, and then after you tap on it, you can see it's actually really the hardy, and that, it's in really good shape, as cement product would be naturally.
The reason I'm sort of going through this phase-by-phase question here is just to paint a picture here, so now we understand that really the vinyl windows, when you purchased the house, were on the rear of the house, and basically hard to see from the road.
Yes.
That's accurate, yes.
And so now, where have you been stopped? Where have you replaced the windows that, with new vinyl windows?
On the, on the left elevation, I'm sorry, on the right elevation, as you're looking at this picture here.
So it's only the pair to the right of the front porch, the lower level?
And then on the right side of the elevation going towards the rear, and then that's where we stopped, is once we got back there, we stopped.
On the right side, it appears to be from the photograph, because the ivy's covering On the right side, it appears to be, from the photograph, because the ivies covering it, appears to be just one window in the lower level?
Yes.
So you've only replaced three windows?
Oh, no, 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 no.
From, from the front and side view. When you go back behind on the right side of the home into that L corner where those stairs are, there's one room. I believe that's where your crew started. So there's a room, if you can go back to the picture that has the stairs...
Stairs?
That, right there, back one. Up. That one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So to the right of that door is a small nook room, and I believe they started there. That's on the actual backside of that. So there's one, two, maybe six windows in that, two there, and then four on the very backside of the home there. I think they started there and were coming around this way, towards us, towards the driveway side, and then stopped on the front of the house.
What I'm trying to understand is, when you see where Ms. Belcher asked the question, are you gonna continue to paint that railing, you see a clavard section at the top of that railing closest to us. That must be a one-story addition, because when you look at this picture, the front of the house, the main part of the house is two-story. And so have you gotten into any of the two-story section of the house and replaced windows?
No.
Just the front two windows to the right of the front porch?
Yes.
That is correct. And if you can go back to that, that picture we were just looking at, that's actually a really, the one with the, with the new stair treads? Yes, sir, thank you. If you look at the two windows there that are to the right of that door, if you, if you look at it, you can tell that that elevation is kind of, got a slow gradual slope from left to right. But if you look at the windows, they're actually stalled, installed perfectly square, and that's a good representation of where I was talking about, that we went through a lot of those above and beyond measures to make sure that that was accounted for.
Thank you for explaining all this. I guess, my, my thought is, when I look at the replacement windows, and certainly when you compare the windows in the close-up photographs of the front elevation, and you look at the meeting rails of these two, I can't hold it up, but these are the existing windows, and these are the new windows. Yes, those two new ones on the right.
The ones on the right are new, the ones on the left are the old. Yes, sir.
The, they are one-over-one, so I applaud you in that, that you did put something else in there. But I think my concern is that the, the profiles, that's something we talked about in our last meeting, about windows are a significant part of historic houses, and to lose them is a real concern. In fact, I would have, if the windows were in good shape, I would have even said, keep the old windows and put up storm windows, and not even get into all this, replacing of the windows. But to me, their profiles are not significantly larger, not like half the height of the meeting rail, but they're, they're noticeably different, in my opinion. And so my concern is, is that we're changing the appearance of the old house, and so that's why I was careful to point out the two-story section versus the one-story sections of the house. What I'm gonna call the right side, as you face the house, sits back far enough from the road that from a right-of-way aspect, you really can't see them. And so I'm less worried about those, myself. But the front section and along the left side, which would be the east elevation, especially the two-story section, that is the, the higher, more prominent part of the original building. The rest of it, we'd have to actually sit and study what part is an addition and which is not. But, because siding could have changed over the years, and just really never know if it's an enclosed porch, was always, or was a one-story something, who knows? But I have to say, I'm concerned about, and I do dread this conversation, but I fear that if we permit changing of the main windows in a house on, in the, in the district that is a contributing structure to vinyl windows, when we don't typically allow those kinds of materials in the district, to a window that is complementary, that's one-over-one, but yet that its profiles, its material, its, all of that is just different than the existing. And so I would, myself, highly recommend that you repair in kind, replace the two, the windows that you have put in, rebuild them if necessary, putting in windows that match the ones to the left, and if you want to have energy efficiency, put in storm windows over them. Park Service allows those now, from what I understand. But to replace them all in kind with vinyl windows, that changes the vocabulary, I, I have great concerns for that.
And it's, do you mind going back to that photo again? Thank you so much. And it's a, I'm sorry, the one that, the one that we were looking at originally.
I'll point.
The one that had the two, the two, no, I'm sorry, the one that had the two side-by-side windows over the front porch, or by the front porch.
The replaced ones?
Mm-hmm.
That, that one there?
One more. Yep. Nope, one more. You're going right.
You're going right.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And you, and it is a valid concern, and it, and I agree with you completely, that it is something that, that needs serious consideration. As part of one of the things that we were doing in this is making sure that we're not changing any of the elevation heights of the windows. For example, making sure that they are all symmetrical as they are now. So for example, the two windows that, you can see the exposed wood trim there, where we stopped, the two windows there on the right, if you follow the break line in the middle between the top and bottom sash, and you let your eye follow that across the front door, across the mailbox to the others, you can see that, again, part of, one of the things that we really worked hard to do was make sure that everything was lining up in one flowing line. Our owner, if I could be so bold, is a little anal retentive sometimes when it comes to this kind of stuff, which I guess is why the company has the reputation that it's got. But it, it, obviously, that's one of the things that, that we did. And this type of situation where the vinyl window is a concern, and a very legitimate one, as you were talking about, in keeping with the historical nature, what would be, is there an alternative, or what would be a suggested alternative to being able to keep those as they are? Do we go in and rework the trim? Do we go in and, and, because some of the windows, obviously, as, as he mentioned, if you can imagine, were in a very obvious state of disrepairing. Yes, we could have just done a storm window over the top of it. I personally did, never considered that as the contractor, and so that's a shame on me. But to go in and, and try to do that when you've got rotten wood and that type of thing exposed, I, I guess maybe that's why I never considered just trying to put the band-aid over the top of the old window. And so again, that's, that's my fault. I should have, I should have considered that as an option.
I'm with Jim. I hate this conversation. The problem gets to be for us is where do we stop?
Sure.
Allowing vinyl in particular, and it's not just, this is not just an issue here, it's, it's an issue with every historic zoning commission in, in the United States. And it's, I, I, I can assure you that I'm sympathetic to your idea of making the windows as energy efficient as you can. And I have lived in and owned a house of that age and dealt with the old windows, and it was an aggravation, to say the least. However, when I had the opportunity to either keep them or change them out, I kept them. I had to work a little bit harder.
Sure.
But I, I kept them, and I have to agree with Jim that I think that, that we're responsible for trying to make sure that every effort is made to preserve original fabric in the buildings where it's still structurally intact.
Absolutely. Then as a suggestion, because the windows on the right elevation were the ones that had the most rot, and I, again, I'm not a rotten wood expert, but I would assume that it's just due to the weathered nature that that particular elevation gets because of the trees, the drippings, the sap, the, the amount of exposure to sun, wind, rain, would it be possible to be able to leave those as the vinyl so that they don't have the amount of rot or the amount of maintenance and upkeep to them, and just preserve the wood windows across the front?
Well, I, what, what kind of shape are the windows in, in the front?
The front, actually, they're not as bad as the sides were. The sides were deteriorated to the point where they literally, they were just crumbling apart, which is, while we started on that particular elevation, it was the worst, and that was where we wanted to start, to focus our attention to begin with. The ones on the front, while they're not great, I, I, again, I have the faith in our, in our craftsmanship to know that I could go in and, and rework those if needed to please the board, and also preserve the intent of this being a rental property and not a personal home that he's trying to live in. So I believe we can absolutely make the board more than pleased with that.
So that would be the, the five windows on the front?
It would be the five sets of windows. You've got essentially, on the front there, you've got two, four, six, eight, nine windows. The ones across the top, they were actually okay. They had been covered enough, just from the elements with the exposed draft details and the amount of overage that you've got, that they did, they are not in the shape of disrepair that the others were.
Okay.
Jim, is it safe to say that putting storm windows on top of the old windows is something that you feel okay with?
I feel okay with it, to me, because they're reversible. You can always remove them if, if you choose to restore the house, and you want the appearance of the original windows to be expressed. So it's my understanding that the National Park Service will allow these. I mean, they prefer them be interior storm windows, but frankly, I've never had any good luck with that. They are a nuisance, and I would not recommend that to anybody. But I have no problem with them being on the outside, particularly that these are one-over-one. If they were like six-over-six, or nine-over-nine, or something like that, where you would lose the shadow that the mountain provides when you look at it, I would have a little more heartburn. But being that they're one-over-one, I mean, to me, I, I would love to see that, that right pair and any associated deterioration repaired, but that the windows, I hope you kept the sash, I don't know if they're still there and can be repaired.
Some of them we do have, so the ones on the front, I believe so, but again, the ones on the side were absolutely just shot.
Well, and that's my point. I think it's, it's a bit of compromise, because when I look at this house, I see the two-story portion first, and the L, the, that wing on the rear, that's on the left side. So I would love to see the windows that are exposed on the east side remain existing, and you put storm windows if you want to, for energy conservation. I have no problem with that. I'd love to see the front windows, the, the lower right-hand windows that were replaced with vinyl, replaced with wood windows to match what's there, or the originals put back. Then as you turn that corner, and you've got the end of the two-story section, leave any windows. It appears to just be one below, I couldn't see because of the ivy, one above, that those all remain the original windows. The ones on the back, because they are hardly visible, and really, we wouldn't have any parview to, to replace, to comment on the windows we can't see on the back, we have no responsibility to that. You can barely see the windows to the right of the, that far stair back that you're gonna rework. And so to me, leave those as vinyl, but keep the other ones as wood, and if you want to put pre-finished aluminum windows, or just a painted window, however, whatever nature it is, whether it's pre-finished or you come back in and paint it later, keep those original, and not replace them with vinyl. And I, I hate to be saying this, because I know you've got an investment having already purchased them. Makes me sick.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we're in the business of adhering to the guidelines, and I think replacing with vinyl is a mistake.
Okay, so the ones on the front, as needed, then we can put storm windows over it for the energy conservation that, that would need to be, that would need to be done, and the two that are on the front that we have already replaced, where we stopped, I will work diligently to go back and see if there is something that we can do to salvage parts and pieces off of windows, and maybe get enough to get that. If not, then just go back with a like-wood window?
I would rather you rebuild them as much as you can, because I've seen these restoration kits for historic windows, and they are just basically jamliners and new sash, and they look horrible, too.
Mm-hmm.
There's some really bad stuff out there right now.
There is.
Because there's too many choices.
Yes.
And so to me, I, I mean, where you have the new vinyl windows on the back part of the house, they're already insulated, they provide you the, the green nature that you're looking for, for energy savings and costs and all this. But the existing windows on the east side, or the, or the left elevation, the front, and the two-story end on the west elevation, which is the right elevation, stay the original windows. If you want to put storm windows on it for energy conservation, by all means do, in my opinion, but replace those two windows on the front elevation that have already been replaced with wood to match exactly the construction that's there.
Okay. All right. So again, for clarification, one more time, we're talking about doing the, the two where we stopped on the front, and going in and replacing those. We'll work to try to, to salvage parts and pieces, to go back and, and put the originals at least enough to get it back together as, obviously, and we'll, we'll work to do that. We'll work to do that. So that's not a problem at all. That's not a problem at all.
The window on the side, on the main level, on the right side of the home?
Where the most of the rot has been occurring on that, on that right elevation, because we had, I want to, again, as somebody that serves on two planning commissions, I want to make sure I understand specifically...
Are you talking of this window here?
Yes, sir.
East side?
East side window? It's a single one of the long?
West side. West side, rather?
I believe that's the west side, yes. Because we, because, because somebody had mentioned the word, try to compromise and do the one on the front, but then, so again, I'm wanting to make sure that I understand exactly what the motion is going to be.
My motion is to, from this corner here, the two-story, on the back, it'd be the, oh, Lord, it would be the southwest corner of the house, that you come all the way around...
Okay.
And you go to the front, and you replace those two windows with wood. These all stay the same.
Okay.
And then all of these windows on this elevation here remain original, and you put storm windows on them if you want to. The two you've already replaced down at this end, put them back as wood, but those original windows stay. The windows on the back of the house that we can't even see from the right-of-way anyway, we can't even make a comment about them. But the two we can see from the right-of-way on the west side of the house, looking back to where that stair is that are vinyl, I say, let them have them.
Okay.
I understand that. Y'all understand that? Everybody understand the motion?
I draw pictures.
Everyone understand that?
Does Brendan understand it?
I don't either.
It's complicated, that's why I tried to do this incrementally, I knew it would be.
I, I understand, so...
Is there a second to the motion?
The one on the driveway side.
I'll catch it up afterward.
Is there a second to the motion?
I second.
There's a second to the motion? Is there further discussion regarding that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you for diligence.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, right?
Yes, sir.
We've covered all.
Thank you.
Is there any other business before the commission today, after court?
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment. Last meeting, I mentioned that there was some possible interest in making the North Manny Avenue area, Historic Avenue area, into a historic zone here in the city, and Robert put that in front of Joseph Adelot. The recommendation backed by Joseph was, instead of our committee going forward and trying to get a vote of interested parties in that particular geographic area, that the, a representative of that area get the interest and come back to us. And so I forwarded that, forwarded that information to Steve Baughman, and he said he would attempt to make that happen.
Okay.
Is the area that you're talking about, the area that's in the National Registered District?
Yes, sir.
And how far from Manny does that stand? I guess it's on that.
It's on that map.
It's on that map there.
That map.
Yeah, where the light blue is.
Okay. So the purple is, is Main Street.
That's the National Register District, yeah.
National Register District and Murfreesboro Historic District.
Well, there's a little bit of our historic zone in the Manny Avenue Historic District, but not a lot.
But, but there are two separate National Register Districts.
Right. The pink is one, is the East Main National Register District on the map. And then the blue is the Manny Avenue National Register District. And there's some overlap inside our historic zone. So it's, it's a little busy.
The blue that is below the black, the dark black outline is in both. Is that correct?
Well, it's in the historic zone for the, for Murfreesboro plus it's a National Register District. You're right. Right.
Both, both of them.
Okay. Any other staff reports, comments? Meeting adjourned.